Had permission, or I'm not quite sure what happened. I was in the caucus meeting. I tried signing in, but it kept putting me in as a participant, not as a panelist. So you couldn't hear me. I could hear you, but I wasn't on the call.
I have the same problem, Frank.
Yeah. I never seem to get through any of these Zoom meetings without one problem. I figured if I got the first session in, I'd be okay from here out. But any event, um, good evening, everyone, and I apologize again for the delay. Welcome to the uh, July meeting of the Milford Board of Alderman's Ordinance Committee. We're going to take up um, one ordinance amendment regarding motor vehicles and traffic, uh, chapter 14. I don't know if the um, if uh, the clerk, Madam Clerk, is there, um, can you do the roll, please?
Chairman Frank Smith.
Here.
Alderman Genitasio.
Here.
Alderman Harla.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Madam Secretary, Alderman Vitale would like to be excused. He's traveling.
Thank you. For present. Frank, you're muted.
Uh, uh, Ms., Madam Secretary, I don't remember how we did it the last virtual meeting as far as the um, posting of the uh, the noticing for this meeting. Do you happen to have that for the uh, usually the newspaper edition?
Yes, yes, I do. It was published on Wednesday, July 1st in the New York Register.
Okay. Alright, so we, we have in the meeting members of the um, of the ordinance committee, which includes Alderman Genitasio, um, Alderman Tony Sutton, and who else? I know Ray's not available tonight. Who else is here?
Me, Frank.
And Greg.
Harla.
And Ellen, you, you're visiting.
I'm a guest. I'm not a guest. I'm just here. And you're live. The public can hear us.
Okay. Um, I'm going to read it. Um, we are going to consider tonight an ordinance amending chapter 14, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally Section 14-13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milford. This regard, this is related to restricted parking areas, uh, the city parking lots at the various Milford beaches where there is paid parking, um, and continues to be for the summer season. We want to remind everyone that right now there are executive orders uh, that the mayor has issued that it stay in effect during this pandemic. Uh, anything that would go into effect in the amendment of this ordinance if passed would only take effect um, at the end of that period of executive order. Uh, I don't know if you're on the line, Mr. Mayor, but is that pretty much your understanding of the way this is written?
Yes. So during the pandemic, uh, beach parking is reserved for residents with a beach parking sticker. And under the executive or emergency order, uh, the fee or the violation is $90, whereas there's a different violation under the uh, parking ordinance that the Police Commission has identified the level of severity for beach violations. So during the pandemic, during this emergency order, uh, this ordinance is not in effect.
And there is no mention of the violation in this particular ordinance amendment?
The Board of Aldermen adopts three different levels of fines, and then the Police Commission attributes each of the different type of parking violations to a different level.
Right, okay. Now, let me all just read the amended ordinance, Section 14-13 Beach and Other Restricted Parking Areas, Parking Charges for Unrestricted Area During Certain Months of the Year, and also mention of the seasonal parking sticker. Also, please bear in mind too, the public that's attending this is if this is limited to out-of-town uh, vehicles only, uh, does not affect Milford residents with uh, valid Milford parking stickers. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, right now we are, at least before this, the 2019 and 2020 were considered valid proof of residence. Is that correct?
Under, under the emergency orders, you can either have a 2019 or a 2020. If those emergency orders are lifted, uh, you should have, or you're supposed to have, a 2020 beach parking sticker. But you're absolutely correct that under this ordinance, uh, Milford residents will always be free. Always have been, always will be.
Right. Okay. Section A, from the Saturday prior to Memorial Day, and including Labor Day of each year during beach hours is set forth through Section 16-2, No person shall park a motor vehicle in the parking areas at Gulf Beach or Walnut Beach, marked and designated by appropriate signs as an unrestricted area, without paying a parking charge of $40 per day. That has been amended from $20, the way the ordinance is written now. Or any portion thereof at the nearest kiosk unless said vehicle displays a sticker as provided in Section 14-12 as just discussed. That is Section A. And uh, just as a procedural matter to the members of the committee, I'm going to ask that we take a vote on all three of these as a single ordinance, unless somebody feels they would like to divide this. Um, and we would put that to a vote. Section B, from Saturday prior to Memorial Day and including Labor Day of each year during beach hours is set forth in 16-2, No person shall park a motor vehicle in a numerically designated street parking space on Walnut Beach area without paying a parking charge of $5 per hour. That is up from $250 per hour, which is the way the uh, the existing ordinance reads. Or any portion thereof at the nearest kiosk unless said vehicle displays a sticker as provided in Sections 14-12 or 14-13C. Section C, actually, there's four sections. Any person may purchase a seasonal parking sticker in lieu of paying the daily parking charge upon a payment of $250. That's up from $150, which is how the existing ordinance is now written. Such sticker will permit parking at the unrestricted area for the period of Saturday prior to Memorial Day, due and including Labor Day of each year. Such sticker shall be issued by the Police Department. The sticker shall indicate the year of its issuance and shall state, quote, "seasonal parking," end quote. And Mr. Mayor, since I'm asking you on this, these stickers are, can be picked up at the tax collector's office. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, and there's an opportunity for, for residents uh, to do it by mailing in their uh, application, or by emailing their application to the tax collector, or by faxing their application to the tax collector. So the preference is actually to do it remotely as opposed to having to go into the tax office.
Okay, good point. And finally, uh, Item D, any motor vehicle parked in violation of this section shall be towed pursuant to Section 14-24 of this article. That is the uh, is the amended ordinance in its entirety. Uh, I'm going to ask if anyone on this uh, call, any member of the public would like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, please indicate to whoever's controlling this. I don't know if it's you, Mr. Mayor, or... You see anyone calling, uh, looking to be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Um, Justin Rosen is the administrator for this Zoom meeting. If anyone has a interest in commenting, though, they, they should use the, utilize the raise your hand function.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah, on the bottom of the.
See anyone?
Okay, we don't see anyone. Um, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance amendment? Please indicate so by raising your hand. Justin, you see anyone?
I do not.
Okay. Um, we have, uh, we don't have anyone wishing to make any public comments on it. I'm going to ask for a motion to uh, from the floor to uh, consider the proposed amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Sutton.
I move to pass along the proposed amendment to the full board for its consideration.
Thank you, Alderman Sutton. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All participants of the committee indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman Smith.
Okay, we have to do a roll call?
Actually, Alderman Genitasio would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tony.
Hi, uh, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Yeah, I just, for discussion purposes, first and foremost, I understand that this is for non-residents, but in the ordinance, it doesn't specifically state that. I don't know if, if that raises a concern or not. Um, you know, based on my packet, this one page, it doesn't really say that, um, it's for non-residents. So um, I just wanted to, through you, maybe to uh, the mayor or the city attorney, uh, if, if that is okay, or is, should it be amended?
Is that part of a larger ordinance, uh, Mr. Mayor or Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, uh, through you to Alderman Genitasio. So the actual ordinance that's before you does speak to the fact that, one, this is only for parking.
Right.
Normally, uh, anyone, whether you're a resident or non-resident, can use the beach, other than right now during the pandemic. This is a specific isolated incident where uh, non-residents cannot. Anyone, however, during normal circumstances can utilize Milford shoreline, Milford's beaches, you know, just as, uh, just as the same way residents can. However, this is limited to parking and parking only. What this ordinance does speak to is that in order to park in a city designated beach parking area, you need a city beach parking sticker. So there's a separate ordinance that your board has already considered that has to do with the requirements for beach parking stickers. No, this ordinance only addresses parking and it's only, it only mentions that you have to have a city of Milford beach parking sticker. Even non-residents can purchase those stickers uh, for a, a price of, you know, a seasonal sticker for a price of, right now it's $150, it would go up uh, to $250 if this, if this uh, suggested ordinance passes.
And actually, in, in both A and B, it does spell out unless said vehicle displays a sticker as provided in Section 14-1. So it's in there already that says you need a sticker.
Okay, thank you for the.
And Alderman, Alderman Smith, uh, just as brief background, you know, this adjustment is really to make sure that um, our police, our recreation department, our public works is better able to control the huge volume of people coming to our beaches, specifically Walnut Beach and Gulf Street for which the ordinance applies. We've had a lot, a huge increase of, of folks utilizing those beaches that, just because we put a ton of resources in. And again, the revenue that we're collecting doesn't necessarily cover, you know, it covers a small percentage of the resources and the costs associated with maintaining these beaches, but it is something. And the other aspect of this is it really just brings us in line with other shoreline towns. You know, places like Fairfield are $40 during the week, $50 on weekend. Stanford is $65. You know, Campo Beach in Westport is $45 and $70 on the weekends. Bridgeport Seaside is, for out of, out of state is uh, $50 and $60 in Bridgeport. So this just brings us in line with some of our neighboring towns.
Mr. Mayor, do you know what the parking, excuse me, um, with the park, there's no parking fee at the Silver Sands State Park right now, is there?
Right now, I don't know. Uh, normally, there is a parking fee for out-of-state folks. If you're not a Connecticut resident, there is a parking fee. A few years ago, the Passport to Park Program went into effect. Before that, uh, beaches like Hammond's, there was a, a charge for parking, the expectation was. But for this Passport to Park Program, there was going to be a fee at Seaside Park even for Connecticut residents. But right now, uh, there is no fee under the Passport to Park Program for Connecticut residents, only out-of-state.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alright, any further, I'm sorry, Tony, did you have?
Yeah, it's just, I know that this, through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I know this was before us at one other time, but uh, it, it never, I don't think it, it had enough support to pass. I, I remember uh, visit, visiting this issue, parking issue, and raising the fees. So I am in favor of it as proposed. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Genitasio. Uh, I think we had a motion, I think we had a uh, we were looking for a second on that. I, I did, you did give me an eye on that, Alderman Sutton, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Alderman Harla, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Let me, uh, Madam Secretary, could you please just go through the roll, please?
Alderman Frank Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Genitasio.
Yes.
Alderman Harla.
Yes.
Alderman Sutton.
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Will be referred to the full Board of Aldermen later on this evening. Is there any more business to come before the ordinance committee? Seeing none, may have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any, any opposed? Motion for adjournment carries. We are in adjournment. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Yes. Thanks, Justin. Evening, everyone. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 6th, 2020 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. This meeting is being conducted remotely, and as we begin, I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few guidelines to ensure business runs efficiently and that all statutory and administrative rules are followed. Number one, in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded. It will be made available on the City of Milford's website. Two, if a member of the board would like to speak, please utilize the raise your hand feature via Zoom. Please do not speak over one another, individuals, and when you are not speaking, please keep your phones and computer, computers on mute. After being recognized to speak, please state your name prior to making a statement. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are and join me as we salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Maureen Richatelli. Mrs. Richatelli was extremely active in the Milford community and worked at the Milford Police Department in the Records Division for more than 30 years, and she will be very well missed. Please join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. With, Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Gaynor.
Here.
Alderman Genitasio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardiman. Alderman Harla.
Here.
Alderman Parente.
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Here.
Alderman Winterb Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Tranquilly.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Madam Secretary, Alderman Vitale would like to be excused. He's traveling.
Thank you. Alderman Willis.
Here.
Thirteen present.
We have thirteen present. We do have.
Alderman Hardiman is here.
Oh. Fourteen present.
Alderman Hardiman is here now?
Yes, he is.
Good evening, Alderman Hardiman.
Good evening.
So we have fourteen.
Good evening.
Madam Secretary, we do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Please use the raise your hand feature via Zoom, or state your name if you're using the conference line. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limits granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time or provide comment through email. The board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. We received the following comments via email to the Board of Aldermen public comment inbox. Number one, Alexander, Alexandra Powell, 91 Ocean Avenue, and Charlotte Bell, MD, address unavailable. Brian, want to speak? Do you have your hand raised?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Brian Anderson, 49 Ingersoll Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, former Aldermanic colleagues. I wish to be recorded in favor of the resolution in support of justice and equality that you will take up this evening. Milford is unique among municipalities throughout Connecticut. It is a great place in which to live, work, recreate, and raise a family. With 17 miles of shoreline and easy access to other points of interest, is it any surprise, then, that we are a destination for others who wish to visit our parks, beaches, shops, or restaurants? As such, it distressed me no small measure when a resident took it upon himself to call the authorities to have a young mother and her family removed from a local park. That one act is contrary to the beliefs that most of us hold dear and harmful to our identity as a small city with a big heart. The freedoms enshrined in the Declaration of Independence that our country celebrated this past weekend made manifest that our country is stronger when we support one another in our individual pursuits of happiness. And therefore, it is incumbent upon each one of us, and all of us collectively, to stand up to racism and hate wherever it is, it exists, and to root it out. Therefore, I commend the mayor for his leadership, city clerk Karen Fortunati for her pivotal role in making this statement an inclusive process, the aldermen who worked to refine this community statement, and members of the public who contributed of their time and their talents in helping to shape the statement of compassion and understanding. I look forward to your favorable action. Thank you very much.
Amy Romano? Would you like to speak?
Yes. Hi, Chairman. Hi, Board of Aldermen and Mayor Blake. My name is Amy Romano. I have been a proud Milford resident since 2006. My address is 67 Howser Street in Milford. I'm also here to speak in favor of the resolution, but would like to ask for some additional considerations. My professional area of expertise is maternal and newborn health, and I have helped lead various efforts nationally and regionally to improve maternity care outcomes. And I'm a published book, journal author on this topic. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of Health Equity Solutions, the leading nonprofit organization focused on health equity in our state. So it's from the lens of someone who's been deeply involved in advancing the health and well-being of mothers and babies. And here this evening to ask the City of Milford to declare racism a public health crisis and to commit to action and accountability. The United States has worse maternal and infant health outcomes than nearly every other industrialized country, and behind this deficit are unconscionable racial and ethnic disparities. In particular, our black mothers are three to four times more likely to die from pregnancy and birth complications than white mothers, and their babies are more likely to be born prematurely and to suffer long-term health problems or. Dozens of studies indicate that the root causes of these disparities are increasingly understood to be racism, not women. Racism causes persistent discrimination and disparate outcomes in many areas of life, including housing, education, employment, and criminal justice, all of which impact health and pregnancy outcomes. Racism also gets into the body and affects cells and organs through elevated cortisol levels, a biological response to stress. These can result directly in prenatal and birth complications, including pregnancy-related hypertension, diabetes, ill birth, and blood clots. Although pregnancy is the area I'm passionate about, racism intersects with all areas of health. Generations of deep-rooted structural racism have exacerbated the health divide in conditions ranging, ranging from COVID-19 infection to heart disease, diabetes, and childhood asthma, of which affect our community. I know that this body is prepared to discuss an anti-racism resolution this evening, and the draft resolution is a critical first step that I wholeheartedly support. However, it does not go far enough to acknowledge racism as the public health crisis that it is. In addition, a resolution does not provide the accountability our community needs to ensure that urgent and sustained actions are taken. I would like to propose that a group of individuals work to follow this evening's resolution with an ordinance with clear goals and objectives, and a commitment to assess progress and capitalize on opportunities to further advance racial equity. I'm happy to answer questions, and Dr. Tekeisha Everett, who's the Executive Director of Health Equity Solutions, I believe is also on the Zoom this evening to answer questions both about health equity in our state and steps that local governments can take to advance health equity. Thank you.
Lorraine Holmes?
Lilian.
Lilian Hall. I recognize your face anywhere. Sorry, Lilian.
That's okay. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Lilian Holmes, and I live at 100 Oxford Road, and I have owned my home here for the past 46 years. Declaring racism a public health crisis is important to me and is a necessary declaration for the City of Milford. Racism has and continues to hurt people physiologically and impedes our ability to live a healthy, prosperous life. While Milford declaring racism as a public health crisis will not single-handedly dismantle racist systems and support community healing on its own, it is, however, a first step in the overall process. Viewing racism in this way will afford Milford City and health officials and other stakeholders a clear way to analyze data and discuss how to dismantle or change problematic systems in a way that would. or change problematic systems in a way that will elicit meaningful change in our entire community. What is racism? According to Dr. Georges Benjamin, racism is a system of structuring opportunities and assigning values based on the social interpretation of how one looks, which is what we call race. It unfairly gives disadvantages to some individuals and community and then afford advantages to others. Racism may be intentional or unintentional. It is a driving force of the social determinants of health like housing, education, employment, policing, and it is a barrier to health equity. How is it that racism is a public health crisis? A 2018 American Public Health Association statement notes that a disproportionate number of people of color are more likely to experience low-quality healthcare, have less access to resources, and are more subjected to police violence each year. Beyond the personal impact those encounters have, the abuse takes a toll on community mental health well-being, which is linked to overall health. Has any towns in Connecticut done this? On June 15th, Windsor was the first Connecticut town to pass the resolution. Racism is a public health crisis. By June 24, Hartford, Bloomfield, West Hartford, and New Britain had all done the same. That's five towns in ten days. Other cities and states have considered joining this movement. Will Milford be the next to join the movement that racism is a public health crisis? Why should my city of forty-six years, Milford, that is, the city with a big heart, why should we declare racism as a public health crisis? Making this public declaration is the final step of intentionally immersing health equity in policymaking. It offers a straightforward way to acknowledge and address disparities. Racism attacks people's physical and mental health. It is an ongoing crisis that needs our attention now. It is amplified during this pandemic as communities of color face inequities in everything and an added burden of COVID-19 based on less access to testing, treatment, and care. People of America, people of Connecticut, and definitely people of Milford cannot remain silent. As Martin Luther King observed, "The ultimate tragedy is not the oppression of cruelty by the bad people, but the silence over that by the good people." I refuse to be silent, and I call on you to join the advocacy for a healthier nation, beginning right here in Milford, the city with a big heart, by declaring racism a public health crisis and following this resolution with an ordinance with objectable outcomes. Thank you for your attention.
Sarah Bromley. Sarah, you must be on mute. We can't hear you.
Try that again. I'm Sarah Erin Bromley. I live at 27 Norway Street in Milford. I would like to also speak about, I'd like to thank you all for for speaking about this, considering this resolution that's come before you tonight. I'd like to thank all the people who worked hard to write it and for all of you who are here to, to talk about it tonight. Thank you very much. I'm really pleased that Milford is addressing the issue of racism with this anti-racism resolution. And, but I do agree with some of the previous speakers. I may not be as eloquent, but I agree with them that we can do even more by adding a component, another opponent component to it, and that is declaring that racism is a public health crisis. I think that would be easy to amend to this, add to this resolution. And we're certainly hearing a lot of evidence as to the fact of that. When it comes to discussing racism in public health, it's, it's really important. Words matter, actions matter. But specifically, I think it's important to refer to racism as a public health crisis instead of an issue. The wording is important because it's more accurate. Racism also meets the four criteria that the CDC requires in order for something to be considered a public health problem. Those four criteria are that, one, it places a large burden on society that continues to increase. Number two, it impacts certain parts of the population more than others. In addition to that, number three, there's evidence that preventative strategies could help. But number four, this hasn't happened yet. While we're on the subject of words, when we talk about race, as others have mentioned, we're really talking about skin color. There's just one race on this planet, homo sapiens. So to use the word race in talking about skin color is our first mistake. We know the roots of institutionalized racism run deep and impact the health of people of color in every aspect of their lives, including access to education, housing, job opportunities, not to mention the persistent threat of violence. Each one of these factors have both direct and indirect public health implications. So I would hope that we could move, number one, to add a, a public health statement to this resolution. And then also, we could work toward involving our public health department in, in making substantive change in checking out what's going on in Milford that we can do, make concrete steps to improve the quality of our whole community, especially our non-white community, our people of color. Six thousand four hundred, was it six thousand four hundred thirty-two? So, six thousand four hundred twenty-four people of color, non-white people of color. Those lives are really important to me, as are all our lives. I'm going to stop now. I really appreciate your time tonight, and I hope you will consider adding a little more to this resolution and continue the conversation in the days, weeks, months, years to come. Thank you very much.
Alice. You're up next.
Good evening. My name is Alice Darwa, and I live at 34 Florence Avenue. And I would like it on the record that I, too, would like to see the Board of Aldermen add to this resolution that racism is a public health crisis and that this resolution is the first step. And we need more action for our city because Milford is ninety-three percent white, not by chance, but by design. The shoreline of Connecticut stayed segregated through the 1970s. My parents grew up, and each of them had a single black classmate in their classes in public schools in Milford. A black boy that I went to school with was shot up in his car in New Haven. And we're ninety-three percent white, and there's not, so there's not a lot of black people in Milford to speak up about this. And they also don't feel really safe to. Because I can speak from experience, my extended family that we cut off from communication are incredibly bigoted and hateful and racist. And they live in Milford still. And they violently hate black people and gay people and everything. And so the city, our city needs to address our racist past and address the racist, the racism in, in the, in public. Because it's not everyone, but the racists in Milford are more outspoken than racists in other parts of, of Connecticut. Racists in Milford have been harassing organizers in other cities who have been organizing Black Lives Matter protests. My friend who's younger than me, she just graduated high school. She was holding up a Black Lives Matter sign, and a guy drove past her and spat on her. And during COVID, and the Milford PD tracked him down really fast. And you probably saw on Facebook their post about trying to identify the man who was driving the truck. It's because he spat all over my friend because she was, she was holding an anti-racist sign, and that made him so mad that he wanted to spit on her. And the woman who was asked to leave the park, not only was she asked to leave the park, but because she spoke up about it, a man in Milford started cyber stalking her and harassing her and sending her death threats and sending her family death threats and calling her children, her young children horrible slurs and comparing them all to animals. And so racists in Milford, because our past has never been addressed. And because this town is ninety-three percent white by design because of what happened in the past, racists in Milford and bigots of all kinds, because my extended family doesn't treat me like a person anymore because I came out. They feel, they feel like it's acceptable to be more outspoken in, in this city. And my, my new aunt is pregnant, and she's black. And she's scared to death about having a baby because black mothers die so often and black babies die so often. And with COVID, it's more likely that she or her baby will die. And I know that Milford can be better because I know that there's a lot more people in here that are better. But I also know how ugly it can be firsthand. I know how horrible people in Milford can be. And we need city leadership to help us feel safer in our homes. We need to feel safer. I never want to move out of Milford because I love this city, but I don't feel safe anymore. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Does anyone else want to speak of a comment? I don't see anyone else wants to speak. I want to thank everyone that came forward to speaking on tonight's meeting under public comment. We are going to be going on with the, with the meeting at this point. Agenda item number three, Alderman Sutton. Consideration of minutes for the regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on June 1, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Both?
Aye. Mr. Chairman?
We, we have to have a rule call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genintasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Hardiman?
Did you get that? It was yes.
Thank you. Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Agenda item number four, there are no special meeting minutes to consider. Agenda item number five, Chairman's Report. I just want to thank everyone for behaving themselves. I guess Governor Lamont has complimented, complimented everyone. The state of Connecticut has been doing better than any of the other fifty states as far as keeping the numbers down as far as the virus is concerned. And I'm very proud of the city of Milford as well. Mayor Blake has done his job keeping everyone posted, and the Milford Police Department as well. Everybody's working as a team and keeping everyone safe. So with that, open under agenda item number six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Is there a report from the mayor?
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hope everyone had a spirited but safe Independence Day weekend. I know that it was beautiful Saturday and Sunday, and everybody, even though it was not the same type of Fourth of July festivities that we normally have, I do know that most people got out and about and enjoyed themselves in the nice weather. As the chairman mentioned, since we last met, Milford and Connecticut are starting to open up again because of those good numbers that Chairman Vitro mentioned. The fact that Connecticut's numbers, the positive cases as a percentage of overall, as a percentage of overall tested cases, the number of hospitalizations, they continue to decline, which means that we continue to open up. Since we last met about two weeks ago, Phase Two started opening up things like indoor dining and a host of other businesses that were not previously open before. Even today, we're continuing to open up some youth sports. For example, today we opened up our basketball courts that had previously been closed and other sports as well. And we're hopefully going to continue this very beneficial trend of allowing Connecticut and the city of Milford to open up more and more. But again, it's, it's going to take all of us, the entire community, the entire state of Connecticut, working together to stay apart. Everybody's been doing a fantastic job making sure that we continue to stay healthy, and I wish everybody continued good health. Other than that, if you have any questions as they come up on the agenda, please let me know. I respectfully request your consideration and action on those items 8A through 8C. And with that, please let me know if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're open under agenda item number seven, there is no unfinished business. We're open up under agenda item number eight, new business. Alderman Sutton, agenda item number 8A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of Aldermen approve the attached materials management agreement between the city of Milford and H.I. Stone &amp; Son Incorporated and to authorize the mayor and director of Public Works to take all steps necessary to effectuate said agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Genintasio.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I'd like to ask the Public Works Director, Mr. Saley, if he's available for some background information on this agenda item that's before us.
Sure, Alderman Genintasio. I'm available.
Good evening. Mr. Saley. Good evening. Mr. Saley, um, first and foremost, Adam, excuse me. I don't, I don't see any pricing structures in here. Is this going to be an increase of cost to the city? Or are we going to realize a savings by moving to this, this new vendor?
So uh, there will be an increase in cost. The issue we had, we had the same vendor for approximately 10 years. Uh, our sludge was being brought up to Waterbury. Uh, we had a number of issues in regards to water, uh, water, um, percentage of water in the sludge. And uh, they no longer wanted to take our sludge. Uh, we went out to bid and we had no one bid on it, believe it or not. Because we've had some issues with the, the water quality or the, the amount of water in our sludge. And we're working on a workaround for that, but time was running out. So we, we asked the Alderman to look at this contract uh, and to approve it so that we could have some time to maybe put some other systems in place within a year.
Just to follow up through you, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Saley, you mentioned the water. Do we prepare the sludge? Is there a de-watering process prior to um, having it removed from the waste treatment plants?
There's a, there's, there's both a chemical process and a physical process. One is a press that presses the water out, but before that they add a, a polymer that is supposed to actually pull the water out of the sludge. And uh, like I was stating before, we just seem to be a little below the standard that they want. They burn this sludge in an incinerator, so when it has too much water, it's not as efficient as uh, the, the, some other towns' sludge.
So Director Saley, are we, is there anything that we can do on our end to prepare uh, the sludge prior to having it picked up in order to um, realize, you know, uh, less of an expense or to save money?
That is the goal, uh, but as, as I stated previous, the issue we had, we're running under a time constraint and we didn't want to be literally stuck with this sludge. So this was a prudent way for us to uh, continue to look at other options and we are. One is a, a manual press in addition to the press we have. Uh, and the other one is re, repiping some of the plumbing that's in the um, sludge room. And, and, and uh, Lindsay, Lindsay King is working on that system. It just wasn't going to be done in a timely fashion for us to make it. We, we honestly thought, we had a 10-year relationship and we didn't think we'd have a problem with keep, continuing to bring it up to Waterbury, so.
Mr. Chairman, through you, so this obviously is going to cost us more money and this is something that needs to be done because we have, uh, I guess, an inventory of sludge that needs to be removed?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I don't think we have an inventory. This is the uh, the periodic uh, disposition of the sludge that our wastewater treatment plants produce. We want to make sure that we have an outlet or an area to dispose of the sludge. Uh, it's a byproduct of uh, the wastewater treatment process. Uh, ours is a wet sludge. Really, this, the water content of the sludge really hasn't changed in the last 10 years. It's just the willingness of the vendor that we've had a relationship with in the last 10 years has changed. As you know, uh, we have reduced our sewer user fee for next year, even based on this information. We've reduced our sewer user fee the last few years, but including next year, there's a significant reduction. So overall, our wastewater treatment plant is running more efficiently. This is one area where there's going to be a little bit of an increase, but we're going to make up for it i- in other areas of that operation.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mayor Blake, so can you be more specific as far as what the increase will be? Um, I do understand the point that uh, I guess the relationship that we had with the existing vendor, their standards have changed. So this has put us out into the market. Um, however, now we are dealing with the reality of the material being um, holding water. So is there, can you be a little more specific on what this is going to cost maybe in the short term?
Again, it's based on the amount of sludge that we dispose of. We don't know exactly how much, um, or how long we're going to have this relationship before we go out to bid. The uh, the intent is to uh, again, go out to bid again, uh, so that we can reduce the prices based on a new product or a new uh, de-watered sludge. But uh, for example, the anticipation is approximately a couple hundred thousand dollars over the course of the year if nothing changes, but we are looking to, again, put this out to bid again very shortly. But I'll let um, our Public Works Director give you this, the exact number that we calculated, but it's approximately $200,000 increase over the course of the entire year.
Okay.
If nothing changes.
If I could comment on that, uh, Alderman Genetasio. So one of the issues that we had is um, we were looking, we partnered with a fuel cell. I think everyone's aware of it down at the Beaverbrook Plant. That's going to save the city close to $300,000 a year in electric, electric, electrical costs. A part of that component was we were going to get a $250,000 capital infusion as part of the contract to update some of our uh, digesting systems at, at the plants. Because of the issues of getting the, 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 the um, money, which hasn't, I don't believe we even received it 100% yet. That money was going to use to increase the digester, which was going to reduce the water in the unit and also reduce the actual weight of the sludge. It actually decomposes the, the sludge. Um, so there's systems in place that we're trying to do, and as I stressed before, we just kind of ran out of time. At the end of the day, though, the mayor's correct, our sewer usage fee is going to go down. Um, you don't, you never hit 100 or a thou- 1,000%, but I think the wastewater division has done a pretty good job of containing costs. And uh, we, we're cautiously optimistic that once we get the handle on this, we'll be in a position to, as the mayor said, go out to bid and have a better sludge to bid with.
Okay, I, I, I understand. I just wanted to get a better idea of the sense of urgency and what changed with the vendor. But, you know, moving forward, I hope that this is just a temporary situation and that we do uh, you know, upgrade our press in order to alleviate, you know, um, sending out water because we're just, you know, paying for, for weight. I mean, water is, is obviously the heaviest, um, you know, liquid that you can um, send out. And if we're going to be paying for the water by the gallon or, or, or the, I don't know how they measure it, but um, you know, the $200,000, you know, could, could, could add up. Um, I, I just wanted, you know, in order to support this, um, you know, I, I feel like I, I need to understand uh, what the long-term plan is. I'm not opposed to the, to the short term, and I know that you've always worked diligently, Director Saley. And it, you know, it, these, these things do, you know, come up, I guess, from time to time. Did the vendor that we're working with, how much notice did they give you um, to the point that they weren't going to accept the uh, the water, uh, the water sludge?
So I believe we went out to bid sometime in, in March with the anticipation. We've had a long-term relationship with them and we honestly didn't think that they would say, hey, we're not interested. And then we were even more shocked that we didn't have other people bidding on it. That was the, the bigger shock. It wasn't even a price issue. It was uh, an issue with uh, the, the water, but we're not alone in this. There's other towns because of the new deep requirements with air quality and stuff. So there's things, there's, there's, there's business issues that are going on that kind of, I think, made this company decide that they, they no longer, they no longer wanted to take our, our sludge. But as I said, I think we're in a position that within the year, we'll be in a good position where we will be able to improve the quality uh, of it, and you're 100% right when you talk about water. We don't want to be paying for water. Um, and we're looking at some different things. And I think Lindsay King is trying to be creative on reworking some of how we process this, so we're cautiously optimistic.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate the explanation. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the time.
Alderman Win Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to Director Saley. Director Saley, good evening. I wanted to just ask a question regarding, you said there was a time, you said you ran out of time to find a new vendor. What do you mean by that?
So when we went out to bid, again, as I s- stated, we, we just anticipated that the, the vendor would renew the contract. And that was the first shot that we weren't anticipating. They came back and said, no, we don't want to, we don't want to renew. So then we went out to bid thinking, you know, we honestly didn't grasp the marketplace. The marketplace had changed, uh, and uh, so when no one bid on it, it made us very concerned. We were working with um, City Attorney Birch and myself and Lindsay King to figure out the most appropriate way, along with Fed Biakar, our purchasing agent, figure out the most appropriate way to move forward. Uh, because we didn't want to be stuck. Obviously, we produce, and I think you guys see the information, how many tons. Um, so there's, you know, a, a roll-off that comes out of the Husatonic Plant, and then there's a smaller container that comes out of the Beaverbrook Plant. We have two separate uh, treatment plants. Um, so, you know, we just didn't want to be caught in a position where we uh, didn't have anywhere to go with it.
Thank you for that. And then, so how, how much time then should be spent on exploring different vendors on a, on a project like this?
I would say, uh, you know, you should start a year in advance, to be honest with you. Uh, but with that said, we've never had an issue before. I, I mean, the contract we had was 10 years, but I think they, we've been using the same vendor for, for over 20. And uh, you know, it just-
If I may, uh, interject, uh, Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Smith. Uh, my recollection is that our, our, the current vendor, uh, that we've had a longstanding relationship with, we had options to renew each year. In, I believe, February, um, we got notice that they would not, they were electing not to renew. So that was the first notice um, by the vendor that we had been using. Uh, and we had a very competitive price, as evidenced by uh, what's currently before you. So we then subsequently went out to bid for the transport of our sludge. The bid process took some time. Uh, we received no formal bids. Primarily because of the weight of the sludge is the feedback that we got. We then engaged uh, with a few people that responded that they weren't interested under the current parameters of our bid specs to see, as, as time was running out with our current agreement with Sinagro, what we could do um, in terms of getting an agreement to have a stopgap, i.e. this year. To see if, you know, we could have the sludge continuing to be hauled away uh, and to see if we could make improvements in the manner that the Alderman Genetasio was referencing to our sludge to uh, reduce some of the water from it. I hope that's uh, somewhat helpful to your inquiry.
It does. I appreciate that. Um, a- and you, and through you, Mr. Chairman, um, to the City Attorney, you'd indicated that the, that the contract was up in February. When did you put this out?
No, no, uh, Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Smith, that's when we received notice, right? You know, we got notice from the contractor.
Okay.
This month, end of July.
You put it out to bid at the end of July?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. You put it out to bid?
We received-
When did you put it out to bid?
March.
March, okay. I thank you for that. And, and then I just wanted, through you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to follow up. It's going to be a $200,000 increase this year. Did I understand that correctly?
That's what we're estimating. We're hoping that we can uh, increase the removal of water from the sludge during this process and our, and our goal is to mitigate the, the increased cost substantially. Can I guarantee it? No, but that's our goal.
Thank you. And then just where is that, where is the $200,000 going to come from?
As I've spoken, out of the operational comp, uh, depending on where we see savings, we believe we're going to see substantial savings in our energy costs. So when that time comes, if we don't have the savings, I think we're going to get in the sludge. We'll be able to do a, a board of finance transfer, which will become before you, and then we'll make another transfer, transfer uh, with the Alderman.
Mr. Chairman, it's Ben Blake. Uh, as a follow-up on that, this does not come out of tax dollars. This comes out of the sewer user fee. Uh, it's associated with the wastewater operations. So uh, as we mentioned, for next year, there's a pretty substantial reduction in the sewer user fee just because of other operational efficiencies.
Thank you, Director Saley, City Attorney, and Mayor Blake. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, rule call vote?
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genetasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winterp Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor. The motion is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is item eight B, Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board approves the attached allocation transfer number one, vehicle acquisition program.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? On the motion? Alderman Genetasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you, um, just wanted to make a comment that I'm, I'm pleased to see that we have an allocation for police cruisers. Uh, my question is, uh, the $220,000 that's been allocated for this uh, vehicle acquisition plan that's before us, do we have an approximate number of how many cruisers um, we, we can expect um, to get?
Mr. Chairman, uh, through you to Alderman Genetasio, I do know that uh, the police chief spoke to this during our budget deliberations. Uh, and he mentioned that uh, it is going to be a little different this year because, one, there's a new make and model of the Ford Explorer. And because of that, there's uh, some equipment changes that have to go into that too, which add additional costs for a one, you know, one time only. Uh, after that, things like roll bars, lights, sirens can be switched back and forth between the, the new frontline vehicles. This year, there, it's going to be a little bit more expensive, but this $220,000 is the identical amount that was requested by the department uh, for this budget year.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Blake, and uh, just to uh, move along here. In regards to the Public Works um, Vehicle Acquisition Program, I know that we talked about the um, the last bonding cycle, uh, the need for an additional plow truck or two. And you mentioned that that was going to be effectuated through the TAR grant. Do you have a delivery date on, on that? On those trucks? Are they being built now? And uh, when can we uh, expect those trucks? Will they be here uh, prior to this coming winter?
So, Mr. Chairman, through Alderman Genetasio, they will be here, or they should be here before next winter. There's approximately a six-month turnaround for those vehicles, those two six-wheel plow trucks that we are already ordered. Uh, they're a little over $200,000 apiece. We did utilize uh, TownAid Road Money, which is a grant through the state in order to purchase those two trucks. We also purchased a few more vehicles that work on the road. Those should be even quicker delivery times, but uh, those have already, those orders have already been placed. So uh, you know, at worst, it's five months from now before we get delivery, which puts us, if this is the, the seventh month, um, sometime around early winter.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to speak to the Public Works Director in regards to the pickup trucks. Uh, there's an $80,000 allocation. And my question is, uh, the pickup trucks that are being purchased, um, for what use? And uh, who will actually be uh, driving the trucks? Are these going to be for um, foremen or these for uh, you know, if you can just give us a little background on that?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Genetasio- Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gian Tasio. The $80,000 was two years ago, and then next year. For 2020, the $80,000 is for a large ballfield mower.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. So we're getting a mower and we're also getting a rake?
Okay, that is correct.
And those are, those are obviously important pieces of equipment that we're going to need moving forward. I don't know, I know a lot of these fields that we're installing are synthetic. But I guess the ballfield mower is going to be used for specific to ballfields?
So Alderman Gian Tasio, you are correct that some of these fields are turning over to artificial turf. But there's a lot of need in the city. And we've had issues where this mower, which is going on seven years, I believe, has had some mechanical issues. And then we fall behind in softball, baseball, the ballfields in general. They're highly used, and we felt it was prudent for us to have that. So we'd have the frontline one and then a backup, just in case something happened.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Blake, and thank you, Director Salley.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing done. We'll move on to agenda item number eight. I'm sorry, roll call, vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Gian Tasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winterp Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Aldermen approve the attached resolution promoting social justice and equality.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, I want to thank those that took the time to attend this meeting via Zoom and provide their thoughts on this resolution. And not only those who are here on the meeting tonight, but those who have spoken out behind the scenes, whether it be in a public forum such as Facebook, whether it be at the Democratic Town Committee, whether it be at any other gathering of concerned and interested citizens of this city. I particularly want to thank Mr. Anderson, Ms. Romano, and Ms. Holmes for their comments. And particularly want to thank Ms. Garlock for sharing a very personal and moving comments and remarks about this resolution that we are putting forward tonight. I just want to say, as an Alderman, that I appreciate and understand the desire to add language or a sentence to this resolution regarding racism being deemed a public health crisis. However, I don't think inserting one sentence deeming racism a public health crisis into this particular document serves that idea well. I think if us as a board are to address that issue, it should be part of a separate resolution or a separate ordinance. And there should be a much broader cross-section of citizens, particularly the Director of Health, particularly people from various communities within the city of Milford, to have input into how such a resolution ordinance should read. There is no doubt, and I believe that the information is compelling, about being, about racism being a public health crisis, a public health concern. However, what we have here before us today, I think, is a positive first step by the City of Milford, by the City of Milford Board of Aldermen, to denounce racism and hate in our society and show the state-surrounded communities where we are on this issue. I encourage those who spoke this evening, those who may be watching on television, to contact the board, contact their representation, and give us your input on this very serious issue. So I urge the members of the board to adopt this resolution as drafted and as presented to this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Sutton. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Beatty? Alderman Beatty, I think you're still on, you're on mute.
I want to thank the speakers, particularly Lillian Holmes and Amy Romano, who spoke to the ongoing work that is needed to address the public health concerns and the health disparities. I was taken by all of the, the resolution is important. But the fourth whereas says, "The city must engage our community in meaningful and honest conversations about racial injustice, to build alliances and to work together." So I would like to pick up on Amy Romano's suggestion that there be, if not tonight, if not added language in here, as Tony Sutton has said, we shouldn't do it quickly. But there should be an ongoing committee task force group that starts, that looks at the public health statement as part of a forward-moving resolution. And that would have the teeth of having other members, as Tony Sutton mentioned, the Department of Health, public health experts. I would like to work with the people, sort accountability, a subcommittee, if you will, that takes this model that is so well-spoken and I think will be heartily endorsed by us as a first step. But don't let it lead to, let's not leave tonight without that strategy taking form. Doesn't have to be in this resolution per se, it can be separate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Frank Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to applaud Ms. Bromley, Ms. Romano, Ms. Holmes, and Ms. Garlock for their powerful testimony here tonight and for all of the work they've done in recent weeks in advancing some of these issues. We, I talked to Sarah and Bromley on this matter a few days ago. And whereas I think the resolution in support of justice and equality is a very eloquent and very well-placed and timely document, I think represents the better angels of our nature here in Milford. I do agree with them too, that something more concrete has to be identified in the way of some type of public act that will acknowledge the fact that from a health standpoint, from a medical standpoint, African-Americans, people of color tend to have a far higher negative outcome when compared to groups of other races. I also, though, as an elected official in Milford, also recognize that what we do and the sentiments that we express, and if they're backed up in law, also a need to serve the greater purpose of the city for our immediate and important issues that come before us in terms of Milford as a city. We're part of a larger world, we're part of a state and a country. And our country right now is going through some turmoil that I don't think we've witnessed, at least since the 1960s. And I think it is incumbent on local boards like ours to take some type of positive, intangible action. Alderman Sutton, or perhaps Alderman Beatty had just mentioned, instead of simply inserting the words, "We recognize a public health emergency", maybe consider, and I am just going to ask, I don't want to draw this out too long, and I don't know if anyone wants to comment on it, but I'd be interested in the comment and the output, the input from my colleagues, if we were tonight to include in this resolution some statement acknowledging that there is a question regarding public health emergencies, how it affects Milford, and perhaps convening a citizens council of the mayor could appoint, it would look at this for the purpose of perhaps developing some type of city public policy around this issue. And to be very careful to appoint people, for instance, involved in the public health sector, involved in policing, and people of color in our city, of which it is a small minority. But to get their immediate and their heartfelt experiences in this regard. I don't know if anyone wants to comment on it, but if they're so inclined, I'd be happy to introduce language into this resolution, identifying the reason for it, and also recommending in this resolution that the city looks at convening a citizen council to be appointed by the mayor and to report back to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen their findings in the way of developing some type of policy ordinances or public acts on this subject. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, good evening. I would also like to thank Ms. Romano and Ms. Holmes for their excellent take on what is currently happening with our, you know, in our city and our country. Because yes, racism is a public health crisis. And it's been acknowledged by the American Public Health Association, it's been acknowledged on a national level. If this resolution included all of the disparities that people of color face, it would be a novel. But we do need something that will take and actually address the fact that racism is a public health crisis. And I agree with my fellow Alders that this shouldn't stop with the resolution. This shouldn't be the last time that this is spoken about. It should be something that we have an appointed force or additional acts taken, or be the source of a ordinance or a task force or, you know, different setting. But passing a resolution is excellent, but that's the easy part. The harder parts come afterwards in actually enforcing the resolution, actually implementing these types of changes that are so desperately needed. So I really urge our entire board to continue focusing on this issue because we do need to take and address racism, as it is something that is a massive public health crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grant. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Parente?
Hi, thank you. Through you, Chairman. I just want to also thank everybody for speaking tonight. It's a very profound and important issue. And sometimes I think people in Milford feel it escapes us, but it certainly doesn't. So I concur with all of my colleagues. I think that the resolution tonight was wonderful. If we insert language, I'd be for that too. But I want us to continue to move and push forward on this, educate our whole community. Those who taught tonight, particularly Ms. Holmes was someone who was instrumental in pushing forward on our Centennial Suffrage Events, which were really leaders in our state. So I want to see us in Milford do something that no other municipality has done yet, and take that leadership role. And I look forward to working with anyone who wants to commit to that. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Parente. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Gian Tasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winterp Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
The vote is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for participating. Agenda item number nine, there is no new business. Item number 10, there are no budget memo transfers. Opening under agenda item number 11, moving on to refunds. Alderman Sutton, agenda item number 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve refunds in the amount of $1,000 as attached to our packets.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, vote, Madam Secretary?
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Gian Tasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winterp Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly? Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman? Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Voting was unanimous. Then, opening under agenda number 12. Are there any reports of any standing committees? Alderman Frank Smith, agenda item 12A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ordinance Committee of the Board of Aldermen convened this evening to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 14 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Stopping and Standing in Parking Division 1, generally Sections 14 to 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milford. This is for beach and other restricted parking areas. But these four items on this particular ordinance amendment are confined to issues involving Walnut Beach and Gulf Beach, these major city beaches in Milford. Section 14-13, beach and other restricted parking areas, parking charges for unrestricted area during certain months of the year, and seasonal parking stickers. Just in brief, item one, from Saturday, prior to Memorial Day and including Labor Day of each year, during beach hours set forth in Section 16 that-2, no person shall park a motor vehicle in the parking areas of Gulf or Walnut Beach marked and designated by appropriate signs as an unrestricted area without paying a parking charge of $40 per day. That has been amended from $20, or any portion thereof at the nearest kiosk, unless said vehicle displays a sticker as provided in Section 14-12. Again, these are applied to non-Milford residents, people without a resident, a current resident sticker. Section B, from Saturday, same Saturday prior to Memorial Day and including Labor Day of each year, during beach hours, as said forth in 16-2, no person shall park a motor vehicle in a numerically designated street parking space in the Walnut Beach area without paying a parking charge of $5 per hour or any portion thereof at the nearest kiosk, unless said vehicle displays a sticker as provided in 14-12 or 14-13C. Item C, any person may purchase a seasonal parking sticker in lieu of paying the daily parking charge upon the payment of $250. Such sticker will permit parking in the unrestricted area for a period of the Saturday prior to Memorial Day, to and including Labor Day of each year. Such sticker shall be issued by the Police Department. The sticker shall indicate the year of its issuance and shall state, quote, "seasonal parking." Finally, the last part of this ordinance amendment. D, any motor vehicle parked in violation of this section may be towed pursuant to Section 14-24 of this article. of this section may be towed pursuant to Section Fourteen dash twenty-four of this article. That is the ordinance amendment in totality. It was brought up tonight by the Ordinance Committee and was recommended by unanimous vote to the full Board here this evening, and I'd like to submit that, Mr. Speaker, as a motion.
Thank you, Alderman Frank Smith. Do we have a second? Do we, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the Board. As you all know, our beaches, our shorefront, they are open to everyone. Everyone is allowed at the Milford Beach, whether that's Gulf or Walnut or Anchor or Holly. We are under unusual circumstances right now. Right now, we're in the middle of a pandemic. There are specific emergency orders for the very closed universe of this pandemic. Our beaches are limited to Milford residents based on the advice of our Health Department, the advice of other healthcare professionals. So these are unusual circumstances. The ordinance that is before you is for when we remove those temporary restrictions. So when we go back to allowing everyone, whether you're from Kalamazoo or Connecticut or Milford, to be at our beaches. Everybody is allowed on our beaches, no matter whether they're on the east side of Milford or the west side of Milford. All of our public beaches are open to everyone. Parking, however, at both Gulf and Walnut, we have always had a paid-for parking. We, right now, are on the very, very low end of our surrounding communities, whether it's Seaside Park in Bridgeport, where out-of-state folks pay $50 to $60, or whether it's Campo Beach, where non-residents pay $40, $45, and $70 on weekends, or Stanford, which is $65 for non-residents, or Fairfield, which is $40 during the week or $50 on the weekends. Those are the similar communities or surrounding communities, what they're charging non-residents. Again, Milford residents that have a beach parking sticker will always be free to park at either Gulf or Walnut, but for non-Milford residents, in order for us to regain some control, because they are so widely used, especially Walnut, that our Public Works, our Police Department, our Recreation Department really require that we have some type of fee that's similar to surrounding communities so that everything isn't just funneled to Milford. Not just during the pandemic, but other times too. We just could not control the volume of people. We have a hard enough time these days controlling the volume of people at, really, Walnut Beach anyway. The fact that we are on such the low end of the spectrum in terms of what we charge for non-resident parking increases that. But the other thing that's an advantage is the revenue that we generate. Again, it's not that much in comparison to what we actually spend on maintaining the beaches through Public Works, through the police, through recreation. We put a lot of resources and there are a lot of costs associated with what we do each and every day during the summer months for all of our public beaches. Public Works puts a ton of resources into the beaches, recreation, a ton, and so does police, as you've seen recently. So this is just one of those common sense adjustments that we have. Once again, Milford residents will continue to be free to park at our city beaches as long as they have the beach parking sticker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Alderman Gentasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, thank you for your, your report. My question is, now that we've doubled the price on these fees, will we be able to better handle the volume down at Walnut Beach? Will we possibly maybe increase the presence of police?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gentasio. At the present, during this pandemic, we have police, a police present at all of our public beaches, significant police presence. We have increased our operation control of our beaches, you know, during the pandemic, really to lock them down so that, you know, we do not have a spike in COVID cases. We're trying to limit the number of people at all of our residential beaches, at a lot of our recreational facilities, so that, you know, we don't have a spike that's attributable to anything that we do here in Milford. Obviously, under normal circumstances, we want to encourage people, we want to encourage folks to come and frequent our beaches. It's part of our tourism, but during this time, we've really locked them down. This ordinance speaks to what's going to happen once the pandemic disappears or at least subsides and we can release some of the emergency orders that are presently in effect. There are always police at a, you know, maintaining control of our beaches, but especially now that we have these emergency orders in place.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, during the Ordinance Committee, you mentioned the fact that the, this goes before the Police Commission next. I don't know if it goes next or it already went there, but they're going to evaluate, you said, the fines that are going to be related to this. Is it, it's a, I know right now it's a $90 fine, but if, if somebody doesn't have the sticker or doesn't have a, you know, from out of town, what's going to be the consequence?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gentasio. The Board of Aldermen sets parking fines, and there are, I think, three or four different schedules of violations that the Police Commission, the Traffic Commission, Police Commission can group different types of violations into those different schedules. I believe that the Police Commission's most recent meeting, they determined that beach parking violations fall into the $85 violation category. So that if you, you know, once this pandemic subsides and the emergency order with the $90 fine is lifted, it will be an $85 violation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Blake. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Alderman Gentasio, is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call, vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Gentasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith? Alderman Frank Smith? Alderman Smith, you're muted.
Yeah.
Alderman Frank Smith? Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
Twelve in favor, two not voting.
We have twelve in favor and two have not voted. Alderman Frank Smith just called in. He's voting in affirmative.
Okay, so that makes thirteen in favor, one not voting.
Sorry, Madam Secretary, could you say that again, please?
Thirteen in favor, one not voting.
We have, the voting is thirteen in favor and one not voting. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Item Number Thirteen on our agenda, are there any reports of any of the special committees? Hearing none. There is no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't need a roll call, vote for adjournment.
Good night, everyone.
Meet adjourned. Thank you, everyone.